All right, thank you so much. Let's get started here. Madam Clerk, I know we're supposed to take turns here on this. Can you, also your share screen is, can you take that down? I'm not sure what's going on there. All right, perfect, thank you. All right, got it. Let's, we need to start the meeting with our land acknowledgement and the pledge of allegiance. Councilmember Gera, since it's your birthday, for your birthday, would you like to do the land acknowledgement and the pledge of allegiance for us?
So Vice-
Great, thanks. Does the clerk need to take a roll first?
Oh yeah, we have to take a roll first. Yeah, yeah, forgot about that. Thank you, Mayor Protem. Go ahead.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Ashby.
Here.
Councilmember Laloie.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Here.
Councilmember Shanir.
Here.
Mayor Protem Gera.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Councilmember Vang. Will join us momentarily, and Mayor Steinberg will be absent this evening.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, now for the birthday, Mayor Protem. Go for it. Get us started.
Madam Clerk, do you mind putting up the acknowledgement? Please rise for the opening acknowledgement in honor of Sacramento's indigenous people and tribal lands. To the original people of this land, the Nisanon people, the Southern Maydou Valley and Plains Miwok, the Putwin and Winton people, and the people of the Wilton Rancheria, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe, may we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather together today in the act of practice of acknowledgement and appreciation of Sacramento's indigenous people's history, contribution, and lives. Thank you. And then if everyone can salute and pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, great, thank you, and happy birthday, Mayor Protem Gera. Well, it's a big deal, and thank you for spending it in service to your city. Appreciate you. The mayor is not here, so you all know what that means. I'm hijacking the meeting and bringing on President and General Manager of the SAC Republic, Mr. Todd Donovan. We tried to deliver boxes to all of your houses. If you didn't get one, please tell me. But the Republic dropped off these amazing scarves to the council members. If you have one, grab it. And Mr. Donovan, tell us what's about to happen and why our city structures are going to be turned SAC Republic red.
Yes, thank you so much for having me on. Thank you, you know, to all the council and council members for, you know, really making all of Sacramento, blanketing it red. This is a huge week for us. We have a massive game against the San Jose Earthquakes tomorrow night at Heart Health Park, 7:30 PM. Unless you're living in a, you know, underground and have not been outside, we have a big game, and everybody in Sacramento is rallying for this one. We're in the round of 16. We're one of only three non MLS teams left in the tournament. The rest are, you know, 13 MLS teams, and Sacramento continues to punch above its weight, which, as we all know, that's what we do. That's what we do as a city, that's what we do as a club. And we have an opportunity, a huge opportunity, to play very late in this tournament at home, which we haven't ever had that chance. So Sacramento is already, you know, showing that it's going to come out in droves. We're very close to a sellout. You know, if you still need tickets, sacrepublicfc.com. It's $2 beer night, so even if you don't like soccer, I think most people like beer, so, I mean, sale right there. But no, thank you all for the support. I love seeing the scarves on here. I love seeing the city blanketed in red and appreciate all of you, and can't wait, hopefully, to see all of you tomorrow night at Heart Health Park to cheer on our guys.
Todd, thank you so much for being here. Councilmember Valenzuela, I, we dropped one at your house. I don't know. We'll get another, I promise. We'll get it over there. She's a big Republic fan, too. I'm so sorry. And Councilmember Shanir is just not at home, so he doesn't have his with him. But we're all really excited for the Republic, and what a big deal this is. National TV, MLS, Soccer City. Colleagues, any of you want to have anything to say, go for it. I see Councilmember Laloie, go ahead.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I don't know, I've been to the games. If you haven't been to any of the games, it's absolutely wild. It's filled with energy, and it's phenomenal. So I'm glad there are more tickets available. I thought it's going to be sold out. Unfortunately, I had an event to go to, but now that I know tickets are available, as much as I hate to say it, I think that event is going to get postponed or rescheduled because I definitely want to attend the game. So we're rooting for you guys. Just bring it home. So congratulations to you and the entire team.
Thank you.
Awesome. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Todd, great to see you. Hey, you know, the Republic is just such a great amenity for our city. I just want you to know that we are not going to quit fighting for a stadium and a franchise. You know, the city is behind you. We love the Republic. We're going to keep on keeping on for you.
No, that's great to hear, and we appreciate it, and we feel that from you guys. We really do. I think tomorrow night is going to be a message that's going to be sent across the entire country, that we are a force to be reckoned with and that we have bigger things ahead. So I think that's the message we want to send tomorrow night, and it's already coming true. So thank you, guys, for that.
Councilmember Jennings.
Thanks so much, Todd. We just want to let you know we're with you. It's been a minute since Sacramento brought home a championship, and this is our opportunity. I know the team is ready. I know the coaching staff is ready. I know that the incredible administration that you have behind the team is ready, and I know every Sacramentoan that loves our sports programs and especially loves soccer, they are ready to root on and bring home a champion right here in the great city of Sacramento. So we are wishing you the very best. I am convinced this is the team that will win it all.
Very well said. I love that.
That's a big deal coming from a Super Bowl champ there. And I know Mayor Protem Gera is like one of the biggest SAC Republic fans in the universe, and he's rooting for you, Mayor Protem.
Oh yeah, no, we're season ticket holders, proud season ticket holders here, and we're excited, and we're not surprised that we're only one of the three non MLS teams still moving through, and we're going to be, keep on moving through. Juntos, juntos vivamos rojos.
There it is. Okay, and one more. Councilmember Vang, would you like to say anything about your plans tomorrow night?
I'm just excited to be there tomorrow, to be with the people and to root on SAC Republic, so I'm super excited. Can't wait.
You're gonna-
We'll have it.
Councilmember Shanir, go ahead.
No, just another piece of Sacramento pride. And Todd, I won't be there, but we'll be there in spirit and just going for the win. Thank you so much for all you do.
Thank you.
All right, I don't see anybody else, Madam Clerk, that, for the council here, but Todd, you're going to have a lot of council members there to support you, as always, really excited. And thank you for including us in the energy. We're thrilled to be able to turn some of these lights red in support from our end for this great team that's pushing so hard. Good luck to you. You make us proud no matter what. Thank you for everything. Go get them.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Let's go! Yeah, let's go! City, go! Go win! All right, perfect. All right, Madam Clerk, let's kick off our agenda here. It's a great way to start. Have fun.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Next is the consent calendar. We have items one through 14.
All right, Councilmember Valenzuela and Harris, I see your hands are up. Go ahead, Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you. I have a comment and a question on item one, please.
Do you want to pull it or just make a comment?
Just make a comment.
Okay, all right. Councilmember Harris?
Yeah, I would like to query staff about item number 10.
Okay, all right, so let's start with you. Go ahead, Councilmember Valenzuela, question on item one?
Yeah, I am asking about item 29, and I'm hoping Chief Lester is on the call. Wanted to get an update from you all about the status of the cruising ordinance conversations that have been happening, and I see the city attorney on as well. Thank you. So yeah, I don't know which one of you two would like to start that off, just to give a public update.
Um, go ahead.
No, I think it's actually probably both of us. I'll defer to the city attorney because we provide some information, and they're really, you know, the legal expert on this.
Yes, Councilmember, as the chief said, we've been working on this, and we had a number of paths that we were pursuing. And speaking with the mayor in recent days, and I know the expression that the council, including specifically yourself, Councilmember Valenzuela, we've immediately shifted to just presenting a repeal ordinance for the council. And we were actually in discussions just this afternoon, trying to say, well, how fast can we get this in front of the council? So I'm hopeful, very hopeful, that we can get it on to you as soon as next week. Crossing fingers, everything, everything works out like it should. I gave the city clerk a heads up. So let's see if we can pull off a minor miracle.
That would be incredible, Susanna, and thank you and your team so much for all you've done, and Chief Lester as well. Just really appreciate. You know, we've been meeting for months about this, and your captains have been super accessible, and you yourself, and Susanna, your team and city attorneys have been on several of those meetings, so just really excited to see this starting to move, and would like to put into the log for us to vote on, so hopefully, this will be off the log next week or the fourth week. I do want to add an item, just making sure that one of the chief's interests is addressed on side shows, which is not related to cruising, totally separate from the low riders, totally separate issue, but definitely heard in the conversation that we need to do some conversation. So I want to make sure that gets put on our log as hopefully the cruising ordinance gets taken off so that we can make sure that that stays on for the chief so that she can get and continue working with your great team, Susanna, on that. So that's my request, and thank you so much for that public facing update. I think it's long overdue. I know I see at least one person in the queue who's going to probably talk about this on public comment, and just really glad that we're taking this step forward and looking forward for more to come.
All right, very good. Councilmember Harris, item 10, go ahead.
Yeah, is Mr. Brown here or Mr. Christensen?
I'm talking to James Christensen.
James Christensen or Mark Brown are either on the call.
Uh, give us-
Councilmember Harris, this is Ryan Moore, Public Works Director. No, they are, James is on vacation this week, so we actually don't have a representative on this item, but I can probably answer your question.
Okay, Ryan, look, I don't mean to hold your feet to the flames, but I got to tell you, as a contractor, when I see change orders of $450,000 on a $600,000 contract, that signals to me that there's a problem. This is a TI of a 3,800 square foot space, and this is an awful lot to ask of the council in terms of changes. So I'm wondering, you know, was it scoped improperly or is it being managed improperly? But this doesn't sit well with me, Ryan, and, you know, I would have taken it up with Hector today. I had a meeting with him, but he had to cancel for something else. So can you offer any information about this project?
So this is a office facility that we have in the central city where we do business operations associated with collection of a lot of revenue in the central city. It is an outdated facility that was already slated for a TI project, but it was, we had a fire in City Hall. I'm sorry. Sorry?
City Hall Garage.
City Hall Garage, yes, which actually created some damage. There was so, there was some unknown structural things that were associated with damage from the fire, and also the damage from water from the fire department putting the fire out that were not known factors when the initial project was scoped. And that's the majority of the change, or there are some other smaller things.
Yeah, so if I hear you right, you're saying that the fire created by homeless in City Hall Garage caused an extraordinary stress on this previously approved project for the TI for the parking support center modernization? Is that what you're saying?
That's true, and not just the fire, but the subsequent efforts to put the fire out created a lot of water damage. There was some associated structural damage that, again, we didn't know about when the project started. And we could provide a briefing for you to give you more details about exactly what the items were, there were the unknown things.
Yeah, well, there's some delineated in the staff report, but it really didn't tackle that piece of it. I'd be happy to talk to you about it further. I'd like to. So let's schedule something, please, Ryan.
We will do that.
All right, Vice Mayor, that's all.
Okay, I see Councilmember Laloie, go ahead.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Just kind of following up with Councilmember Valenzuela about the low rider aspect. If, and I guess this can go back to Madam City Attorney, just in case this should not come up next week or the following week, is there any way in the meantime that we could remove some of the signs that have been kind of posted in some of the, on some of the streets many, many years ago? Because talking to the low riders, it seems like anytime they drive by one of these signs, they see it as really a cultural insult than anything else. So I just want to put that out there. If there's a possibility that some of these, these particular signs can be removed until this case comes back to the council. Thank you very much.
Add on to the council member's point, we really want to keep those signs because I've got a long list of people who want one of them for keepsakes of the change that has happened here. So just putting that out into the universe again.
Keeping it posted or keeping it as far as like a historical thing?
I keep them as, in terms of having them as mementos of the change that the city has done, yeah.
You know-
Can auction them off.
If you don't mind, I don't think it's going to be a problem to get this in front of the council in the next week or two, but if something unforeseen happens, we will make arrangements to have those signs removed.
Thank you very much, Mr. City Manager.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Mayor Protem and birthday boy Eric Gera.
Great, thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. First, I wanted to echo the concerns about Councilmember Laloie and then Councilmember Valenzuela, and to thank Sacramento Low Rider Commission for doing some community outreach and education work over at Oki Park, and their commitment to continue to go out there, and what they found is they had more members, individual members of the low rider community who were not part of a particular car club, who wanted to join and were proud that they were, that there was a group out there educating folks. So I will, I will ask here to move the consent calendar with the direction that we expedite the no cruising ordinance as well, and also to save the signs, you know, for prosperity's sake and for history's sake.
Yeah, we definitely-
Also get to put, can I second that motion with the dibs that I get one, too?
We need one for archives, for sure.
We each get one, and then the commission gets the rest, okay.
Councilmember, Councilmember Valenzuela, put me on that list also, please, as dibs. Thank you.
Now we're going to make more cruising signs so that we can give them to each council. All right, okay, enough of that. We have two members of the public signed up to speak. Madam Clerk, would you call these two members, please?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. The first is a phone number, 4366, Mr. Davis.
Yes, this is Lambert of To The Band Back Cheesecakes, and it's an interesting dialogue. I had my hand up earlier to speak on the excitement of everyone that was on the rostrum. I heard everyone excited about a potential championship. It's very difficult to win a championship, but it was great to hear the enthusiasm for adults that are going for a championship, and I heard everyone on the rostrum comment on it, and I listened and I went, but the Grant High School basketball team this year won the championship at the Golden One Center, and I didn't hear that enthusiasm. We, I actually didn't even see the support. So that's number one. Number two, I'm glad that the Vice Mayor has the gavel because the last time you had the gavel last month, I wanted to thank you because I've heard that you helped the Grant High School Drum Line, you and Mr. Laloie. And I wanted to make certain that the city manager's office helps the drum line. They still have a deficit. You should be excited about them. They're going to Washington DC, and they still have a deficit to get out of town. And then I want to end by saying that the low riders, which I grew up in the 60s and 70s, I'm glad to see that's going down. They're a wonderful organization. I know a lot of low riders. And when you come out of Del Paso Heights, you actually have really good relations with Chicanos and different nationalities, Hongs included. And I want to end by saying that the last time you had the gavel, I had asked you to find out why the-
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
You have that same excitement about teenagers.
Thank you for your comments, and our final speaker is Martin Ramirez.
Thank you for allowing me to comment. Just wanted to also acknowledge the Grant High School championship. I actually grew up there. Actually, I, you know, I ended up, I was cutting the grass there. I was, I used to cut the grass there, you know, at the stadium, so I think that we should acknowledge that championship of youth here in the area. Anyhow, going back to the, to the comments that were made by both Valenzuela and Mr. Loli and also her generative guerra, I agree with all three of you that these signs are a cultural insult and that it's a long time overdue, as Councilmember Valenzuela mentioned. And I just wanted, as a member of the Low Rider Council, educator, and I haven't met many of you in person due to the fact that, that it's been, you know, as an educator and a professional and coaching and the community, it's sometimes tough to make it to all the meetings. But with all that said, I really agree with what Councilmember Gera mentioned, that we have to expedite this, and these low rider signs. We should save them for a low rider museum here in the Sacramento region. Otherwise, with that said, I want to commend all of you council, council members that have been supportive of the Low Rider Commission, and I think that together, as a collective, anything's possible. Thank you.
He's right. The auto museum is a perfect place, you know, where the Low Rider Commission group meets. That's great. Really, really great to see the community come together and push for something so wonderful. Good job. All right. We have a motion from Councilman Mayor Protem Gera, seconded by Councilmember Valenzuela. We have all of our comments in, so Madam Clerk, would you please take the roll?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Ashby.
Yes.
Councilmember Laloie.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes.
Councilmember Shanir.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Gera.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Aye.
Councilmember Vang.
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg is absent. We consent calendar passes.
Okay, I will note for the record that the mayor, though, did go, did go on record this week and say that he was supportive of ending that ordinance as well. So were he here, I'm sure he would have echoed the same comments as the rest of us, so in fairness to him. Madam Clerk, mayor did mention to me that he thought this item might have been removed, but do we still have item 15 on our agenda today?
Yes, we do still have item 15.
Okay, great. Let's hear that now, then.
Oh. Vice Mayor, if it's okay. First, I want to make a note to the clerk, as we talked about in PPE, that the district numbers are still changed to the new districts and not the old districts on the agenda, but I'm happy to waive the presentation, open and close the hearing, and move this item with my colleague, Councilmember Jennings, who will soon represent this area.
Jennings will second that.
And as we always do, to the staff who came and sat through this meeting, who were prepared to make the presentation, we thank you so very much for being prepared and doing all the hard work. Thank you so much, Madam Clerk.
We do need to note that Sean is actually wearing a tie tonight for this.
I know, I feel like. Thank you, Sean. Would you like to say anything?
No, just thank you, Vice Mayor.
Great job, Sean. The staff report was so good, we didn't need to do it again.
Yeah. Very thorough.
Thank you.
And thank you for wearing a tie for us, and Councilmember Shanir, thank you for making sure we acknowledged that he was wearing a tie. That's very good.
He's in neighbor, hasn't he?
Councilmember Shanir burned all his ties after the Aggie Square event. He said, never again.
Absolutely.
That's right. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, and a staff member wearing a tie, so let's take a vote.
Thank you, and for the record, there are no members of the public that want to speak on this item.
Correct.
Vice Mayor Ashby.
Thank you. Yes.
Councilmember Laloie.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes.
Councilmember Shanir.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Gera.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Vang.
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg is absent.
Okay, very good. We are on to council comments, questions, and ideas. Councilmember Shanir, first up.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I appreciate it. This is actually something I normally don't do, but I'm hoping that we can take a moment of reflection here around the tragic, horrific tragedy that happened in Texas today, this afternoon. The last I saw, 20 folks have been shot with 18 people dying. 17 of them were, I guess, elementary school kids. And I don't know, I don't know what we're doing here. I think we need to redouble our efforts as a nation, and I'm hoping that Sacramento can lead. I cannot, cannot imagine the children and what they went through, their teachers and what they went through, the administration, their parents, and the whole community, I'm sure, is decimated. We send our love and thoughts and prayers, but as we know, that's not enough. We need to do more. But I just want us to acknowledge what has happened and do everything we can to support our young people in these really difficult times. Thank you.
That could not have been better stated. Perfect. I just, I'm sure we all agree 100% with that sentiment. Thank you so much, Councilmember Shanir, for doing that and saying it just that exact way for all of us. What a just horrific, horrific tragedy. Councilmember Harris.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor. I was going to say the same thing. You know, the idea of young people being shot at their school is unfathomable. You guys know I'm dating a grammar school teacher. And, you know, the ramifications for the teachers who see events like this happening throughout the country, this is like the 20th of these that's happened in short order. It's indicative of a real big, deep societal problem that we're packing around. So I agree with Jay, you know, in Sacramento, we'll do our part to counter the circumstances that lead people to acts like this, but yeah, we have to think about these, these poor kids who perished today. Absolutely. Well, that being said, I have something on a little lighter note. One is that there is another free COVID clinic tomorrow at Stanford Settlement from 10 AM to 4 PM. That's Wednesday, May 25, and for more information, you can go to stanfordsatelment.org. But I really want to congratulate the kids at the greenhouse, and Angelique, you'll appreciate this. You know, they've got sixth, eighth, and 12th graders. I just want to congratulate them on their graduation and promotion. The greenhouse is near and dear to my heart, it is to yours as well, Vice Mayor, and really proud of the work they do at the greenhouse, and proud of the kids for persevering. That's all.
That is a great organization, isn't it, Jeff? I mean, they really just, they do such a good job over there.
Ball, heart, and soul.
It really is. It really is. Okay, Mayor Protem Gera.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I wanted to also highlight the comments that Councilmember Shanir had brought up, and I was going to ask the clerk, I know that we had already been working with Moms Demand Action before this tragic event this morning on National Gun Violence Awareness Day, which is June 3, to light up our city buildings in orange. You know, we obviously did not, we're not expecting anything this tragic and horrific. I know we were looking at doing a resolution to help educate the community and do our part, and there were issues about, you know, how we can, you know, move this resolution faster. So Madam Clerk, I'm hoping that, you know, in light of the tragedy, that we can try to move this resolution faster for our May 31 meeting, so we can, you know, definitely not only, you know, send our thoughts and prayers and our energy to the families in Texas, but to start here in our own conversation, in our own community, from the losses we've had here because of gun violence. So, Madam Clerk, I'm hoping we can- uh from the the losses we've had here because of gun violence. So uh Ma- Madam Clerk, I'm I'm hoping we can we can achieve that and and join in uh in a more forceful way uh on the National Gun Violence Awareness Day on June third.
Uh, yes, Mayor Protem, uh my office has been working with your staff on a ceremonial resolution for the thirty first.
And I'm happy to help too. I'm a member of Moms Demand Action. Councilmember Guerra is a great advocate for this too. We want, if you need help, Madam Clerk connecting with the organization, happy to co-sponsor with Mayor Protem. I'm sure we all are. This isn't, this isn't a controversial topic. This is a, not on this council. We want to protect kids and we want common sense changes that do everything possible to prevent this from happening. And we all know how it feels to have this kind of tragedy strike our city, unfortunately. And uh it's horrific to be a part of and it's horrific to watch and we know we need to do more. And uh I'm glad there are organizations like Moms Demand that give us all an outlet to work with to try to do some of these things. But um we may disagree on some things. This isn't it. This council is united on this issue one hundred percent. So Madam Clerk, bring us what you can, okay?
Absolutely. Will do.
All right. Thank you very much. Councilmember La Loa Lee.
Thank you very much, uh Vice Mayor. I have a question for um Mr. City Manager. Um, I was wondering if you could um do some research and if you could report back on the two sites uh which were part of the master siding plan that are not feasible anymore. And I wanted to see if there's a the the allocation of funds that were um set aside for the site for those site. I want to know what the balance of those funds are and also um to ask uh council if those the balance of those funds can be shifted back to the district uh for reinvestment of those funds into uh district and the residents and the businesses that are really suffering um from, you know, the just coming out of the COVID era. So I just wanted to put that out there for uh Mr. City Manager. If you could do that, I would greatly appreciate it.
Absolutely. I hope that I get the support from uh my colleagues on this. Thank you.
Yeah, we we will take a look and I think that's that's perfect because the uh the number we set aside for those two sites, they shifted around a little bit. We did a little bit of pre-work. So I'll report back on what those balances are. But just so I'm clear, you'd like those to be redirected back to your district for uh the purposes you described?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Okay. Councilmember Harris.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor. I forgot to make an ask of the City Manager.
Sure.
Um, uh, as you may know, the Evergreen site was recently um surplus by RT for the second time, the first time due to my efforts some years ago. At that time, we had a letter of intent to buy the property. I would like a report back from the City Manager about whether this is still a good purchase, whether we should consider it, whether it could help us with housing or other purposes. Uh, so please um take a look at that old letter of intent, have a chat with RT and get back to the council about whether or not this particular property, which was an incredible bargain a few years ago, uh might be useful in our city inventory. Thank you, Senator.
City Manager, you good?
Yeah, we're good. We'll do. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember La Loa, did you forget something?
Well, I didn't forget, but I just wanted to, uh, Councilmember Harris brought up a a a location that's in my district.
Okay.
And um I am aware that RT has surplused it. And in fact, I am in communication with uh three different potential uh developers for um uh affordable housing. So those are kind of going on um and I'd be more than happy once I get something substantial uh commitment from them to uh run it by the council. Uh, but I would appreciate it if um the city doesn't come in with this significant bid and things get murky while I have the developers um trying to make the site as interesting as possible to them. So I I just wanted to share that information with Councilmember uh Harris and our uh um City Manager. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you both. And uh I don't see any other hands for my colleagues. We do have one hand raised, Mr. Uh Davis on a public comment and then we will wish Mayor Protem Guerra a happy birthday. And we will uh conclude the meeting. So let's hear from Mr. Davis.
Yes, uh well, first of all, happy birthday to uh Protem Guerra. He's been a big supporter of our cheesecakes. And I I I wish you many more. Um, the next thing I want to say is I'm glad that the Vice Mayor has the gavel. Because in April, I asked a question about why ARPA funding for nearly four million dollars went to the Asian Chamber of Commerce. And I needed clarity from the uh City Manager. And you said you would get in, you know, ask him about that. I haven't heard that. That's number two. The third thing is this grant uh drum line. Uh, Mr. La Loa Lee and uh Vice Mayor Ashby, thank you because I've heard from that director and they're like, I think they're twenty thousand dollars short. There's no way that a nationally recognized teenage group should be raising money through cake sales at this point. If you can give four million, nearly four million dollars of our taxpayer money, and I pay taxes from business and personal, the the City Manager's Office should be uh, I don't know the terminology, but they should cut a check loose to the drum line director immediately. Twenty thousand dollars is nothing to City Hall's budget. They have Yipsey, they have Measure U, they have ARPA, they have CARES. What is twenty thousand dollars? But it'll make the difference in their traveling, uh lodging and food. And they're going to represent this city, not just Grant High School, because they're nationally recognized. And I want to end by saying, even though the mayor's not here, I want to thank City Councilman La Loa Lee.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Thank you, Mr. La Loa Lee, for that D two Thursday meeting last week. Thank you.
Next speaker is Francine Maya and Francine will be the final speaker tonight.
Actually, after Francine, we're going to hear from Mayor Protem Guerra.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Uh, happy birthday, Guerra. Wanted to send that out. And then um also, yes, I'm a Grant alumni, so I fully support what the gentleman was saying about the drum line and um Grant breeds strong uh uh very intelligent people that uh do a lot of community work. So I just want to say that. I want to thank you, um Lester, uh City Manager, City Attorney for um your consideration um repealing this ordinance and of course our mayor for his um for his public stand on his support. All of our district representatives, I think all of you are amazing, um especially Katie Valenzuela. She's been working with us closely, you know, and and Guerra and Lowly and Jennings. Um, everybody that that has always, you know, just gave us, let us speak word. Um, and our commission, we look forward to you moving this promptly um to repeal the ordinance. And I just want to say um that, you know, we've been doing the work for forty plus years. And this is, you know, something that I just want to give a shout out to everybody that's in the low rider community and culture. There's been a a lot of work with Land Park Community and building a relationship with Majestic's Car Club and a lot of car clubs, um you know, helping with the parks. And so I just want to say thank you. This is uh going forward, moving in the right direction. And we look forward to continue building relationships with law enforcement in the city. And um I just want to say, thank, thank, thank all of you.
Well, thank you because you guys did a great job advocating for yourselves. You give credit to the city council members, but we're just responding to a good group of advocates who are working really hard, making it very easy for us to do this job. So uh great leadership from the community on that one. Uh, Councilmember Guerra, before I give this to you, I just want to remind folks that this week is the week that our Parks Department goes to their full summer program. So they shift from their spring hours to their summer hours. So that means pools are open more and some of the amenities and things are open more and there's more opportunities for kids and our youth to get out there. And I just want to make sure that folks know that. It also means in out in my neck of the woods here that our the District One Farmer's Market will start back up. It'll it'll start on Saturday morning and then run through the whole summer and and into September. It also means free yoga in the park out at the regional park uh in the mornings. So if you want more information about that, come check out our social media sites and and we hope to see everybody out at the markets and the yoga kickoff of summer, tons of graduations and congratulations to all the graduates from all the high schools and all the colleges. Uh Sac State had theirs this week, really great program. My own son graduates from high school tomorrow, but there are young people in caps and gowns all over our city that we can all be very, very proud of and and I know we all are. Uh, many of you, like Councilmember Vang, Councilmember Jennings and and Councilmember Shanir have attended more graduations than you could probably even remember on in your school board days. But uh it's a very exciting time in the lives of families and we're really proud of every single one of you here in Sacramento. And I'm going to give the floor to, oh my gosh, what happened to Councilmember Jennings? Did you were there a minute ago? You want to say something, Rick? Go ahead.
I I, you know, I was just thinking about the Sacramento Low Riders, which was a conversation that we were on before, a conversation that you just had and the tremendous impact that they've made in the Sacramento community. Um, you know, cutting hair in the parks, feeding the hungry, uh just helping to do cleanup days. Um, they have been a tremendous asset. And I don't think it it's recognized enough what they're doing as an organization to dispel some of the negative things that have been associated with them. They're doing a great job there and an asset to our community and I'm just happy to stand with them as we change these these ordinances that have kept them behind for many years. So I just wanted to make that point.
Oh, that's great. Thank you for making that point. And then I know I said we would come to Councilmember Guerra, but I'm saving him to the end. Councilmember Valenzuela, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry, uh Vice Mayor. I just remembered because I saw an alert that was like you forgot something. Um, we're doing our community mural day. As you know, our arts team has been doing fantastic work, doing paint by numbers type community engaged murals in our district. So the one in District Four is actually going to be at the ABC Ten Building on the corner of Fifth and Broadway. We really did a lot of canvassing and CV circle, new hall vision, um getting the word out to residents. There'll be yoga, food. And so it'll be Sunday from ten to two at the ABC Ten Building and we hope folks will come out. I really want to thank your health foundation for helping sponsor some food so we can increase the number of tickets that we give out to the community for free and we're going to be just having a really great time. So I hope folks will join us for that. Um, and yeah, I just wanted to add my echo to, um, you know, we've been struggling with the post, the social media post since we learned of the shooting in Texas today because it feels like anything we say just um sounds so hollow.
Not enough. It's just not enough.
Competitive because it's like there, it's like there's got to be something. And I remember when the downtown shooting happened, somebody said, gosh, if they didn't do anything after Sandy Hook, what are they going to do now? And and I just believe, I really believe that us adding our voice and as eventually we're going to push through that wall. Eventually, we're going to figure out how to how to get a handle on this because it's just every time we lose another life in such a horrible way, it's just heartbreaking. So um I wanted to just put in that um echoing my colleague's sentiments before before we adjourn. Um, thank you, Vice Mayor.
Well, we're definitely not giving up. That's for sure. All right. You guys are killing me with the double hand raises. All right, Councilmember Vang.
I will keep mine very short. Just wanted to announce um regarding the listening session for a hundred and two acres. We've completed six and we have one more left, which is happening this Thursday. So if you.
Councilmember Vang, how many people have participated in those? Because I've seen some pictures.
A lot.
Massive.
They're they're, they have been incredibly powerful and fun and exciting, engaging. So many folks from the community have come out, but I know there are more folks out there that have not yet had their chance to provide input. And so wanted to share with everyone that our final listening session is actually virtual. So if you can attend in person, you can actually attend online. Uh, it's this Thursday, May twenty sixth from five thirty to seven. And um there is a Zoom link that you have to RSVP for, but you can go to hardenedhustle.org backslash listen to register for the virtual listening session. Um, the mayor will be joining us for that one as well. Um, so really hoping that if you are watching this and you had not yet participated, please come through. Uh, it should be a fun listening session.
I can't wait to hear your final results from all those listening sessions and sort of the top five takeaways. That's going to be, I can't wait to hear. It's going to be great. Okay, finally, I promise I was trying to get to you the whole time. Oh, my God, I swear to God, one of you is, no, Sean, you're out. No, I'm not even calling. Okay, Councilmember Guerra, Mayor Protem Guerra.
Nothing. I was just, I was just gonna say thank you all for the good birthday wishes. But most importantly, I just wanted to say, you know, thank you to my mom out there. Gracias, mama.
Yeah, thank you, Eric's mom. We love having him on the council. Thank you. Happy birthday, Eric. That's great. How go have a good time with your family and thanks to all my colleagues. A great meeting. All right, you guys. Have a good night.